Okay.
Chairperson, how like we call meeting.
So the meeting's called to order as discussed prior to the meeting. I mean, unique situation tonight because we are without a chairperson. And the regulations say that without a chairperson appointed by the mayor, this board will actually make a motion to decide just for tonight's purposes, who that care person will be. So I asked Angie to call the meeting to order. I'm going to have her take roll call initially. And then if somebody could put forth a motion with respect to putting a designated a chairperson for this evening. And then the chairperson can move forward with Pledge of Allegiance and calling. So you can go ahead and call roll call.
Evie Dundes.
Present.
John Normal.
Here.
Steven Miners.
Here.
Uh, Lindsay Zifting.
Present.
Uh, Jack McCann.
Here.
So with respect to the designation of a chairperson for this motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion uh, for uh, the chairperson for this evening. The John Norville, uh, based on uh, he uh, having the um, uh, most seniority of any of the board members.
Then is there a second?
Thank you, boy.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, so Mr. Normal, you will fulfill the role of chairperson for this evening.
Great.
Alright, uh, the meeting starts by, uh, with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag. The whole public was one nation. Your God, visible, liberty, justice.
Yeah, uh, the first item. On, um, is the adoption of the minutes from the December sixth meeting. Do we have a, a motion from the board regarding the minutes that they were presented? Motion.
Were there at least three of you present?
There's two of you.
If there's only.
Yes, so there's two of them. Cause uh, Lindsay and.
And Jeff wasn't here. Yeah. Probably not, um. We might have to carry the minutes forward at least, and then I'll look into how we handle that since we won't be having a forum. It may just be minutes that are unadopted. But I'll look into that issue. I don't know off the top of my head.
Could we table that?
If we can table that and then we'll proceed with the first case.
Alright, we have a motion to table the minutes.
Um, I'll move to table the minute.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. And with that, we'll move forward to the, the one and only item of, of new business on the agenda. This is a discussion of case number PLZBA two zero two four zero 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 one. Uh, one Saint Joseph Street, Troy. Is the applicant, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, is the applicant Jeff Raya present? Okay, if you would please, can you come forward? And we'll try to get you a microphone so that you can tell us about what it is you'd like to do.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from this vote. Um, Jeff and I have done business in the past many times, so I have to recuse myself from this vote. I've worked for Jeff for over the years as a margin. I don't think that qualifies me to vote.
I can accept, I can accept that. That leaves four members of the board that can still vote. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Wow, quite.
There may be, um.
Testing one, two, three.
Thank you. That's for people who are attending remotely.
Okay.
For that.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity. Send our case regarding one Saint Joseph's. This is a very simple case. Uh, we're proposing to build a twenty-four by twenty-four. Our site, to our single family back. It's okay. Back. Okay, as long as you hear me, that's fine.
Okay. You don't have a.
Uh, so, uh, we're building a twenty-four by twenty-four. Big garage on our lot, uh, next to our single family house we owned for, uh, say twenty-five years. The site plan shows the garage as proposed twenty-four by twenty-four with a setback of sixteen-five. Uh, the city's requiring a thirty-foot setback. Unfortunately, we only have fifty feet depth on those lots. Typical lots in Troy are, are a hundred feet in depth, but we only have fifty feet. Uh, while we're proposing a twenty-four by twenty-four, I'm not sure if you had the liberty of driving into a twenty by twenty-foot garage. But it's very hard to get one car in and get out of the, the car comfortably. So that's why we're proposing the twenty-four by twenty-four. But again, we're here tonight just because of setback that is required by the city as setback of thirty feet. And we're requesting sixteen-five to be approved. Uh, all the homes on that street are almost up to the curb, maybe five feet from the curb. So those houses on that street are very close to the street. So our proposed garage is going to be setback farther than most of those homes that are on that street.
Okay. I have to apologize. I have to ask, I, I, I didn't ask for the applicant to state his address. Is that necessary? Or is that only for people who want to speak for or against?
Have him stated now, let's.
If you would please, can you tell us where you live?
Sure, it's five Myrtle Avenue, Troy, New.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay, and so we've heard about the application. Are there any questions from any of the members of the board?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, so you own one or, or single family home? And then you purchased the one next to it or another one?
So it was purchased recently just because the, it wasn't maintained. The city owned the lot, well, actually took back the lot. So they took it back, the lot for back taxes. And recently we purchased it and we, we actually took all the vegetation and, you know, spent five, six thousand dollars because it wasn't maintained for over twenty, I'd say thirty years it wasn't maintained. So this twenty-five by fifty lot was right next to our property.
And when technically did you purchase it? What was purchased?
Uh, it's within six months.
Oh, the last six months?
Correct.
And how much did you say you invested in, in, uh, clearing that?
Uh, so far, uh, over five thousand.
Yeah.
I have a word back.
Yes, and many copies.
He, he, he predicted it in survey, but he has to go through, uh, planning for, uh, lot line adjustments before because, uh, so initially he wouldn't have required side plan and a lot line adjustment. But the creation of the, but you know, putting these lots together would result in, uh, buildable lots. And their city code requires in good planning before, uh, for approval before. So originally what staff recommended was that if, uh, the, a, a decision is to be made for today's meeting, it should be, uh, uh, either tabled or it can be on condition that planning approves of the lot line adjust.
Yeah, that was another question that I have. These two lots are being merged. How is it a creation of a building lot? I understand why they have to be merged. Why is it being. Not creating a buildable lot, he's merging two lots.
Yeah, he's merging two lots together, but so what each other says is that once you are putting two lots together, it will result in, uh, a size that would be, that he can build in, uh, building on it. So one that hap- once that happens, he has to go to, uh, planning commission for approval. Decide, yes. Yes, yes, I think I have.
Uh, I have a copy of the site plan. I don't know if you would like to. I agree. I, I thought you had that. I submitted so many copies and digital and.
The one.
Uh, yeah, I tend to dish. Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll see one. Leave the surveyor marked it as one, two, three.
Yes.
Which is all ours. It's all.
All three or leave your.
That's correct. But actually, two and three were together. It's just the way that when he looked it up in the records, they had, each had separate lot number. So two and three were one. And then we purchased number one from the city, which is one Saint Joseph's. Which is the proposed garage with the setback of sixteen-five.
Yeah.
Right next to that is a vacant lot as well. So to the, to the left of lot, number one, uh, are.
Yeah, sorry about that. I tried to scan it because I didn't have this digital copy, but it didn't work out. But this has to still go to planning for approval. So if, as you mean, this is approved today and planning says no, it's of no use.
Okay, thank you.
It's fair to say what you're asking for is a contingent approval from this board, subject to planning saying to go.
So essentially, this board would have to put that condition on it. I was just speaking with Angie on that. Um, so because there's multiple parcels to be combined. If this board votes to grant the variance, it would have to be conditioned on planning board giving that approval because if they don't give the approval and that could change setbacks if there's some other plan or something that's put in place. So if there is that motion made, it would have to be conditioned on, um, planning board approving the lot line adjustment as proposed.
I'm okay.
Okay. The other option would be to table our business until after the applicant has gone through.
You could do that too.
Okay, um, so I, I, I have two questions. Uh, the, I guess, the, the more difficult question first. Would you accept a conditional i- if, if we get to the point where the board is going to approve your application?
Yes.
Would you rather accept a conditional approval? Or would you rather have us table this for tonight and wait until after the, everything else has been reviewed and approved by plan?
Uh, it'd be, it'd be a beautiful thing if it's conditional. If, if you just approve it as with the condition of, of planning. Uh, because to my knowledge, planning's going to look at it, it's just, we're just combining it. It's not, in my head, it's not that difficult, but I understand you have to go through your process.
Right, and I, I just wanted to.
Thank you for that.
Before anyone puts forth um, a, a motion to approve.
Yes.
They would have to state that it's.
Correct. So we want to. That'd be fantastic.
Thank you. My other question, uh, about the project.
Yes.
You're just building a traditional stick-built garage? You're not planning to run a business out of the garage or, or any kind of residence above the garage? Strictly a garage?
Exactly, only twenty-four by twenty-four, it's not an industrial use. It's just for the, for the single family that we have next door. Okay, no, it's not a, it's not, it's not going to be a commercial use or a business.
Okay, so we've, we've gone around, everyone on the board has had a, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No.
It is, um, what appears to be a twenty-four by thirty foot lot?
Now, maybe I grabbed the wrong survey. So I had to revise my survey so many times, so I apologize. It's twenty-four by twenty-four, and she has the right one in-house. Uh, we had to, because we were using a slab. And if we went with a twenty-four by thirty, it'd be too heavy. So we'd have to put quarter, you know, the footings down. So we just didn't want to go with, we just wanted a, a regular slab and just do twenty-four by twenty. So I apologize. So it's proposed twenty-four by twenty.
Yeah, and again, this is. Ten and a half, you know, the.
Yeah, the, the back of the building will be consistent with the twenty-four by twenty-four. Um, so, uh, we have the proper setbacks in the back. And sixteen-five would change because of the, of the depth.
Right, that getting, well, so based on the rear setback, you can move it further back by the feet. So you have a ten foot setback right now. We also only have a half foot setback to the side lot, which is five. Uh, accurate?
To my knowledge, it, it's not required to have setback on the side.
Angie, we have a, a question about the side setbacks.
The lots are merged. So I think the setback on this one has become moot because of where the garage intended to be.
You, the lot really, it's the other, it's a bit of a case to another.
To, to my understanding, we could build on the line. And the other thing is to the left of that is a.
Oh, sorry.
Property. It's a, it's a, it's a grass area. It's not a building. There's no building there.
We thought I opened up a.
Uh, the left side.
This is. This is the one too.
This is one.
So that's the updated one?
I thought they did neighborhood two.
Five uses, five, five foot. This is the requirement from the statute, the code.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there are two. Four, three.
Five foot minimum, minimum setback. The side in the back. Fifteen foot.
On the front.
Thirty foot on the front.
One side.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I, I read the code to be that, be a five foot minimum side yard setback.
And allow, and allows.
So the question is, do we ask the applicant to move the planned garage five feet closer to the rear of the lot? To minimize, or I'm sorry, to decrease the relief of thirteen and a half feet down to eight and a half feet?
So one of the factors that this board has to consider is the minimum variance necessary in order to, for the applicant to achieve the desired outcome. Um, so just so you understand as well, part of this conversation. So what the board is saying is that you're, as far as the rear setback, it's a five foot minimum. You're proposing more than that, which actually puts you, your, the request for a variance at a higher number. Whereas if you moved it back a little bit more, you could reduce the variance that's being requested. Do you understand that?
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm explaining? I want to make sure.
So, um, the five foot is to question is this left side, which is you're saying there should be a five foot setback.
And we can get to that too, but right now I'm just explaining the rear setback question that's being posed.
Okay, so we're still on the rear. I understand the rear.
Going to want potentially for you to move it back to reduce the, um, right, the front setback variance that's being requested. And if you're willing to do that, then this board can take that into consideration. Um.
Yeah, and if you take a look at any of the properties there, they slope considerably down. So as you make me, if the board's saying, hey, Jeff, please move that all the way back another five feet, then.
That's why I'm asking you that.
Yeah, exactly.
There's some reason why you have a proposal that.
So, yeah, yeah, and it's going to be very costly for us to ready to excavate, to bring grade in. There's a considerable drop there. So that's why we were trying to get it to the sixteen-five, thinking that it would be acceptable since all those buildings are right up near the street. Yeah, it goes head, it goes right down. Exactly, so I have to, we have to level that out. So it's going to be super costly at the sixteen-five setback uh, for us to just put this twenty-four by twenty-four. And also, we were originally going to propose a, a pre-engineered structure, which would have been considerably less compared to a stick build. And, you know, we're, you know, we're a holding company. We, we've been in business, doing business for a long time in Troy, so we pulled on to property. So, you know, we're putting considerable mo- more money into the stick build, which is going to cost us maybe another fifteen thousand or in above the pre-engineered building. Ousing.
So that answers that question, and obviously if I can ask more questions, if you have questions. But I also wanted to address the side yard setback. So as we sit here, we realize that there is a side yard setback that wasn't accounted for. Um, it, are you able to move the garage to come into compliance with the five foot side yard setback so that you wouldn't need a variance for that? Because if you do, then we have to renotice the meeting for that side yard setback.
Right. So we have, I need an additional approval on the, on the side back, on the side.
Feet as it, if it's on the line right now, I don't, is it, would you say half a foot? So you would need a four and a half.
So have a four and a half.
That wasn't noticed for tonight, so we'd have to come back on that unless you're able to bring it into compliance, and that would be an.
Yeah, so, uh, right now, the existing site I have, uh, if you look at that site plan, uh, right next to our single family, you have two parking spaces just there off-street, which is fantastic because it's a hill. And if we move that garage over five feet, then it's going to interfere with our off-street parking. And I understand you're saying, oh, Jeff, well, you just created the extra parking, maybe in front of the garage if you're planning to do that. Or they're just going to have to go into the garage. So that's why I was hoping that since we don't have, which is typical of South Troy, is all those buildings are all on top of each other. There's just land next to, which has been attached to that multi-unit on, on ma- on the main road there for. So, uh, it's, there's no building there. So that's why we were trying to propose it as you can see it proposed now is right a foot off that line for a twenty-four by twenty-four.
So that's your prerogative, but with that said, then we have to notice the side setback and come back anyways.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, that might weigh on the board as to whether or not they wish to table the whole matter, have one complete package, or if they want to vote on this one, and then you're going to have to come back for the side yard.
Right.
I have two questions.
Okay.
Uh, one is you refer to a holding company, so is this an investment property?
Uh, it is a, an investment property, yes.
And my second kind of in- inquiry suggestion is if you do have to come back, I think it would be very helpful if you had photos of the slope and, you know, the, the property itself to give us, you know, added respect.
Great, I can do that. Yeah, and originally I, I, I submitted all that information, photos to planning. And I thought it was.
Yes, if there's any further discussion.
Right.
Any other questions?
I have one other, you had conversation.
Yes, and I made post, I posted.
Yes, everything was posted very nicely.
Yes.
Okay.
So at this point, generally, we would open it up to anyone beside the applicant that wanted to speak.
You still have to do that.
In favor or in opposition.
That's no history.
Absolutely.
There might be somebody online.
Okay. And so I, I'm going to ask anyone, I'll start with those here in attendance, and I'll, I'll move on to anyone who may be participating remotely. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Okay, is there anyone, uh, participating online that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Is there anyone present here in the building that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, no one here. Is anyone attending online that would like to speak in opposition of the application?
No, this is my. I think this person is a student.
Okay. Okay, and with that, I'm going to close the public comment portion in regards to this application. And what that means is, well, I don't want to close it for, if we have to come back, because there may be another, uh, another part of the application to be discussed.
Correct, so for this evening, they've been given an opportunity, we'd move on at this point, it would just be if there's a motion to be made.
Alright, thank you. And so I'm going to have to ask the board, is there a motion to be made about the application that's in front of us?
Either to table or ground or.
Apologies, that would be right now, first to table it, or do we want to take care of seeker first?
This is a type two, so we don't have.
We can just. Yeah, she wants to do that for this evening's purpose, and then we'll move on, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, and so, Evie, if you don't mind, can you read the secret, please?
Uh, yes, uh, with the understanding that we have not voted, uh, on, on. yes, uh, with the understanding that we have not voted, uh, on on a motion yet. Um, as supported by the staff report for PLZBA two zero two four zero zero zero. Um, uh, I, the, I asked that for the limited purpose of Seeker that the board finds that this proposal being considered to be a type-two action uh, with sufficient information upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause a significant environmental impact.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
You know, we, all right, so we have a a motion and a second. I'm gonna ask all those in favor of the Seeker that's before us to say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay. So the Seeker's been adopted. And with that, I think we have to move on to the, uh, to the business of either tabling the application or asking if there is another motion in regards to the application.
I second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Angie, do you want to call the roll on the vote, or do you want me to call the roll on the vote? All right, okay, I'm gonna do my best. Um. Okay, um. Lindsay, how do you vote in regards? You vote yes to table, thank you. Steve, how do you vote in regards to the motion? Evie?
Uh, yes to table.
I also vote yes to table. Uh, Jack McCann has already abstained. So with that, the motion to table has been carried. Apologies. So hopefully, we will see you back as soon as possible so that we can act on this one way or another.
So it's tabled based off of the of planning making their decision?
Th- this hopefully will allow both planning to take care of their business and, uh, staff to investigate the side setback issue.
Okay, because that was in there. If the variance is mistaken.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, that that's the only item that we have on our agenda. I want to thank everyone for helping me through this. I appreciate it. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Jack McCann has made a motion. Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor say aye, aye. Anyone opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you all.